And now that the recording is on, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four Select Board Meeting. I'm gonna open this up and please ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. Tonight, we have a public comment from Diana Hook, the town's Veterans Officer. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance may be added. The number one item is acceptance of donation to the Sherburne Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Zach Waters here. Item numbers two is the recap of the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting and the May fourteenth Annual Town Election. Jackie Morris is here. Consideration of appointment to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. Caitlin Sullivan as an associate member for term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven. An update on our annual appointments to take place on June thirteenth Select Board Meeting. I'll speak on that. Item number five is discussion regarding special municipal employee designations. Jeremy Marset will speak with that. Number six is establish a special revenue fund under section fifty-three K of chapter forty-four of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for a desk of special permit funds. Item number seven, consider petition to the General Court for special legislation to allow town to convert one license for the sale of beer and wine and malt beverages to not be drunk on premises to a license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premises at Specialties eleven South Main Street. Item number eight is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant draft minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, two one-day licenses for Pauline Bounce for the Community Center and a one-one-day liquor license for Kenneth Honor Frey Crafted Mask for Silverwood Farms. Item number nine is select board reports. Item number ten is Town Administrator Reports, Regional School Committee Capital Projects, Upper Charles Rail with Rail Trail Feasibility Study, Local Delegation Budget Request for FY twenty-five, Washington Maple Intersection Construction Update and Staffing Updates.
Great. Thank you very much. You said someone for public comment?
Yes, Diana Hook is here.
Yeah, shall I go? Okay, Diana Hook, in my role as Veteran Services Officer, I want to bring to the Board's attention and to members of the public that we will be Sherburne will be holding a Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-seventh. Those of you who are participating in Select Board, that means you. We are gathering at nine thirty. The parade at the DPW Garage on Butler Street. At ten o'clock, we will march on to Pine Hill Cemetery for the dedications. And from there, we will go to the memorial statue on the corn at the intersection of sixteen and twenty-seven. And after that dedication, everyone is invited to the Community Center for refreshments. This year, we are able to offer veterans who are unable to march or do the hike up to Pine Hill Cemetery, a ride in a convertible. I've had a couple of town residents volunteer to take veterans. So I'm here to help spread the word to any veteran who is unable to march, but would still like to participate in the Memorial Day event that they should reach out to me and we can make arrangements for them to join the parade.
That's great. Thank you so much, Diana. And I will make a quick comment that I forgot to vote on the agenda. It's been three years since I've actually chaired, so please forgive me there a little bit. But I don't think that affects the public comment. And I will say that I've done most, if not maybe all, but one of these since I've been in the Select Board. And it's a great event. And I advise not just members of the Board, but also members of the public to come enjoy this as well.
Yeah, I was trying to move approval of the agenda before you had called on her. So can I do that?
Consider this my practice round. All right, I don't have a motion relative to agenda. Yeah, please, Paul.
So moved.
And I second. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. On favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am as well. All right. Thank you all very much. Okay, just moving on, go to agenda item number one. Acceptance of donation to Sherburne Fire and Rescue Department. I believe Zach is here for that.
Thank you. Just before you tonight to request the Board accept a two hundred dollar donation from the Lee family on Farm Road. And there are no stipulations or designated purposes for those funds. Thank you.
So can I move to?
I think you want to make a motion. Yep.
Yes, can I move to accept the the with great gratitude, the donation from the Lee family and to authorize its expenditure for the purposes for which it was granted.
Excellent. Second by Stephen. All in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am also aye as well. I just want to make a comment before we go on to next agenda item. There's some comments in here and you know, the Select Board, we keep our chat feature on. And I think it's gonna be good practice also maybe before just acknowledge that we have the chat feature, but it's not part of the public record. Sometimes we look at it, we acknowledge it, but sometimes it gets too much. So it's gonna, we record these meetings because they're always available. And I encourage people to, you know, raise their hand and stuff like that and comment during items. But the chat feature itself, consider it like if you're at a public meeting and you whisper something to the guy, person next to you or something along those lines. So that's really what what it's about here. So other than that, you know, it's gonna be a regular meeting, just like it would be in a public meeting. We, you know, you're acknowledged and you speak and we respond and so on and so forth. But I think the chat feature personally, I think is some kind of nice to have. Some people can talk back and forth. Now, the chat feature was not an agenda item. I'll acknowledge it's a limited discussion on it, but something that we've done for years. So I'm assuming Doug, you have something to say about the chat feature?
I want to say thank you for turning it on. Other boards on in the town of Sherburne fight mightily not to use the chat feature even to do exactly what you said, which is talk from person to person in the town. I think it's ridiculous. I have a question about the gift to the fire department.
Oh, sure.
Is it important that the town formally accept gifts like that?
It's required by law.
Okay, well, because the Kingsley family gave a multi-thousand dollar gift to the police department last year. I don't know if you're aware of that.
Does anyone remember? Was that, sorry, apology if I don't remember, was that come before this board?
I, no, we just gave it to the police department. We bought the outdoor furniture, the pot, potter, the flower pots and variety of other things that are adorning the outside of the police department.
Well, let me thank you right now for that gift. We can look into it if it went before. I don't trouble remembering a lot of the specific items. And thank you obviously for that gift.
No, I'm just, I'm not looking for, but thank you for saying, I'm not looking for, you know, applause. I just, I thought, I didn't realize I had to like register a gift. I just gave it. It was like five or six thousand dollars.
We'll look into it, make sure it was officially processed correctly. I do want to acknowledge, probably have someone saying, acknowledge Sean. Say something now, acknowledge Sean. Paul?
Yeah, I was just gonna try to help clarify. I believe that gift as with many for the fire department went to the association, the Police Department Association, not the actual department. That would be the defining this. There's hundreds of gifts per year that go to the Firefighters Association as well that that don't have, that don't go through this channel.
So it's not a government entity. It's a private, essentially a private or a for whatever nonprofit, something like that. So it doesn't have to go through the process of us.
I think that was the difference.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, all that. We'll move on to item number two. That's a recap of the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting and the May fourteenth Annual Town Election. Jackie?
Thank you, Eric. So I just wanted to give you guys a brief overview. I'll start with the town meeting. We ended up having two hundred and four people check into town meeting, which based on our active voters of thirty-one, twenty-one at the time, was a six point five-three percent turnout. The highest vote count that we had was one ninety-five and the lowest vote count was one twenty-five. So I would suggest that next year, we consider a discussion of an article of lowering the quorum. We might not be able to lower the quorum next year because right now, as it stands, unless Governor Healy extends it, it will expire on March thirty-first in two thousand and twenty-five. So as you can see, that's quite a big variant number of seventy people.
So let me ask you a question, Jackie. Will it take an active town meeting to lower? So we'd have to have like a special town meeting would have to do that. If we have a special in the fall, we'd have to do that to make it lowered for the spring. Is that right?
Correct. Otherwise, we will, if we don't, if there isn't a special town meeting, then for the April twenty-five meeting, our quorum will be one hundred. We won't be able to. Yeah, unless the governor extends it, and I don't know if they will do that. So a lot of people did leave. We lost, we lost around thirty people after the Community Preservation Act vote. So, but anyway, I just thought that that was quite a big difference of seventy people between the lowest vote and the highest vote. So people are coming and going. In terms of, do you guys have any questions? So it's just a brief overview of the Annual Town Meeting. I think you guys are aware of everything else. In terms of the election, we had eight hundred and eight people turn out to vote. Two hundred and ninety-nine of those votes were from the vote by mail ballots. We actually sent out six hundred and sixteen vote by mail ballots. So that only half came back. I'm pretty disappointed in that since voting by mail is, you know, goes right to your house, especially with three contested races. But anyway, so we had thirty-one, three thousand one hundred and thirty-one voters. So that was about a twenty-five percent turnout, which is pretty typical for most of our annual town elections, anywhere from like fifteen to twenty-five percent turnout on that. And that's really, that's, that's about it. We will get refunded. It costs about eighty-eight cents a ballot packet to mail out for the vote by mail. And the state is going to be refunding. I'll be submitting the money for the six hundred and sixteen votes ballot packets that we sent out. But the money that comes in will go to the general fund and won't go back to my budget. So at least we'll get some of the money back. The costs associated with that.
You're good. Paul, comment?
That's had some comments about town meeting and the election. First, I wanted to congratulate Marion Nuttner for being re-elected. Hooray. Secondly, I wanted to compliment several people for, I think, great contributions to town meeting. One of those is Stephen Si and the presentation he did on the Community Preservation Act. It was obvious from the presentation, he put a lot of work into it, did a lot of homework, was able to answer questions that was asked by the audience, put in a lot of work and it, it I think brought about the result that happened at town meeting, which was town meeting voted yes on going forward with the Community Preservation Act. So I did want to thank Steve for that. I also wanted to thank Eric Johnson because when the recreation article was defeated by town meeting, Eric was able to pivot quickly and move favorable action on a second recreation proposal, which was much smaller in amount, but which we had not supported because we were, thought we were doing the bigger one. And lo and behold, the voters agreed with Eric and we sort of saved the day for recreation. So I wanted to thank Eric for that. I wanted to thank Mary Wolf for her service as a moderator. That was her, her last town meeting. And as usual, she ran a good town meeting. We were able to get it all done in one day. Well done, Mary, if she's listening. And finally, I wanted to thank Jeremy as, as the articles were being called. Jeremy was there for us, explained articles and answered questions. His, he provided a, a very professional support for what the Select Board wanted to get done and, and what advisory was trying to get done at this town meeting. So all, all those, those people, thank you for making it a good town meeting.
And I'll recognize Doug in a second, but I do want to put it back that thank you, Paul, for actually doing that agenda. Are the, the motion to put the Jameson Field back on there, back on there. I have a question about that, but I'll ask, ask after I recognize Doug. Yeah, Doug, go ahead, please.
A question for Jackie. Jackie, tell, tell me more about the six hundred and sixteen ballots that were mailed out. Was every one of those requested? Were they sent to people because they're infirm and housebound? Like why, why, why were they sent out?
No, so we are only allowed to send out vote by mail ballots when we've received an application from someone. And the reason that it was so high this year was because it's a presidential year and people had, the Secretary of State had sent out those white postcards to everyone in January. And anyone that returned the white postcard and crossed off all that they wanted a vote by mail ballot for all twenty-four elections, twenty twenty-four elections automatically receives a vote by mail ballot for the town election. I could have requested the Select Board to opt out of vote by mail, but I didn't think that was the right thing to do. I thought it would be too confusing. And I thought it was a good thing. We had all those applications. I thought it was a good thing to mail out.
Once, once someone requests a mail out ballot as they did, do they have to use it if they're gonna vote or can they show up at the town hall?
No, we did have, we had about twelve people show up at town hall. So what happens is on the poll pads, when they go up to the polling booth, when they, when the election workers look them up on the poll pads, if they've requested an early vote ballot, it says that, it says requested an early vote ballot. And they are instructed to go downstairs. They need to come and see me. I need to reject their ballot that was mailed out in the state computer. And then I give them a form that I sign authorizing them to vote in person.
So does that mean their mailing ballot is held aside and counted, what, at the end of the night? Is that way it can be taken out?
Their mailing ballot was never sent in.
No, no, I'm saying if, let's say someone sent in a mailing ballot, then they showed up. How do you make sure they don't vote twice?
Because when they come in, every single day, when we get the ballots in the mail or when someone drops them off, we are required to update the state computer. And it says that we received their ballot and it was accepted on May second or May third. So it would, it would say that in, we update the poll pads every single day with the information from the people that returned their vote by mail ballot the day before. Or if we get it that day, like I said, it would say that they requested an early vote by mail ballot and they would be sent downstairs. And then I could look them up in the state system and say, we received your ballot this morning. Sorry, you can't vote again.
Great. Thanks, Jackie.
Sure, you're welcome.
So I question on top of the thing that Paul was talking about before on, and I ask this behind the scenes, but I want to maybe ask it in public to get an answer in public. On that item, on the capital item, the Jameson Fields, where advisory recommended no action. I thought if town meeting turns down no action, then it's automatically considered. Otherwise, what's the point if they recommend no action? If it doesn't automatically go to actually having it on the ballot, you know what I mean? Because almost like it rejects it no matter what. Now you have to make a whole special motion to get it back on. And maybe can someone explain to me like why, when you reject vote down advisories, recommendation, no action, it doesn't automatically have a vote for action or a vote to do, I guess, Jeremy?
Yeah, so there, there needs to be a positive motion on the floor, Eric. When, so if advisory doesn't make that positive motion or makes a, you know, a negative motion is voted down, then to have it considered at town meeting, a positive emotion needs to be put on the floor by someone. It's the, the nature of how, how town meeting works. There needs to be a positive motion to, to act on.
Is that just, maybe it's my memory, bad memory. I swear I thought I remembered in past years when it was turned down, then automatically began positive motion. Maybe it's a non-fiscal article, maybe it's just reworded, you could change a word, but okay, I guess that is what it is. It kind of seems, um, I guess it is what it is. That's all.
Could you maybe add a little more detail to what I, what I said, Paul?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, that the positive motion may not be exactly the same as what's printed on the warrant. So that's why it's not automatic. I mean, let's say there's an appropriation for a hundred thousand. Advisory recommends no action. No action is defeated. But you may want to make a motion for fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand or thirty thousand. There may be a positive motion different from what is in the warrant. That's why there needs to be a positive motion. That's why it's not an automatic. If you defeat this, then automatically you're, you're presenting what's in the warrant.
And looking at what you drafted, I mean, and stated at the meeting, the motion, it is, it was more different than I thought it was gonna be. It was, and maybe we should have those ready to go. I don't know. It just seemed cumbersome. That's all. But I guess it is what it is. Okay, without that, I'm just gonna move on to item number three. Consideration of appointment to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. We have Caitlin Sullivan as an associate member for term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Caitlin? Well, actually. Yep, now I see it right there.
Um, yes, I can do a quick draft action. So obviously I'm Caitlin. I grew up in Natick and went to school at UMass Samhurst at the Eisenberg School, so pretty local. I moved to Sherburne a year and a half ago from moving downtown Boston, where I work in financial services. I work for State Street Corporation. So there's limited community service I can do within the town, given, given my role at State Street, but was interested in, in really getting more involved with the town. It was important to my parents growing up in Natick. My mom was on all these boards. So kind of wanted to get involved in some capacity. And why I selected Sherburne over Dover, other surrounding towns was because of Farm Pond. I am outdoor activist. I love biking, swimming, have a, have a mooring on Farm Pond. That was kind of my welcome gift I got from family to the town. So it's really important for me in, in learning about the declining water quality conditions at the pond was a little bit devastating. I have a family friend who lives on the pond and hearing about that. I, I thought maybe this is an opportunity for me to step in and really help out and volunteer to monitor the water clarity, take the measurements, you know, and learn more about the cyanobacteria and the phosphorus levels and et cetera, everything that's going on with the, with the pond. So reached out to a couple of folks and then got connected with Kath. And I've been joining a couple of the meetings and volunteering, taking the measurements. So was looking to join the advisory committee.
That's excellent. Thank, thank you for volunteering for your time. Thank you very much. Any question out, Paul?
So can I make the motion? So I move that we appoint Caitlin Sullivan as an associate member of the Farm Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Twenty-seven. I think it's supposed to be twenty-seven. I think the, the agenda, I don't know if there was a markup on the agenda.
Yes, it's the twenty-seventh. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, sorry, I'm reading.
Twenty twenty-seven. I forgot to change the agenda. Yeah, sorry.
One second, by Stephen. All in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am also aye. Thank you very much, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, on annual appointments to take place at the June thirteenth Select Board Meeting, Diane Morris.
Hi, Eric. Yes, I just wanted to give the Board a copy of the letter that I mailed out to all the boards and committees back in March, letting them know of the members that were due up for reappointment. I gave you a copy of that letter and the applications. They are coming in. We have some new appointments coming forward this year. And I'm happy to report that we have somebody that's interested in the vacancy on the Board of Assessors. He looks like a very good candidate. He's been speaking with Wendy Alessi, the assessor for the town. And next week, I hope to bring a packet to the Select Board. I'll mail it out of all the applications that have come in, so you can review them ahead of time. Because I'd like to bring them forward to a meeting in June to have them appointed.
Who created the vacancy on the assessors?
Uh, that was, well, we used it, same one from last year, but it had been looked at by the assessor. And she approved it, the wording of it.
No, no, I, I mean, who, why, why is there vacancy? Who, who?
Oh, I'm sorry. Drew Kachal, who was elected, decided not to seek election again this year. So that.
He told me he would, that jerk.
He changed his mind.
Drew, Drew did good time on the, on, how long was he on for? Yeah.
Yeah. And, and he was on, he was an assessor and then he was advisory for three years and then he went back to the assessors, so.
Yeah, he did his time call. Marion?
Thanks to Drew. He did a great job. I recall there was a discussion at a recent town meeting as to whether one of the assessor positions would have to be filled by a member of the town if anyone is, is so prepared. And so what about the, is this, is this the town resident position?
Yes, it is. And actually, the gentleman that applied is a resident of Sherburne.
Oh, great.
With a big finance background.
Good to know. Thanks.
Yes.
And can I clarify, there's a provision, if you couldn't find a qualified person, then you could go outside.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else on that, Diane? Do we call that?
Just wanted to give the Board a quick update. That's all.
Okay, very good. All right, item number five, discussion regarding special employee designations. Jeremy?
Thank you, Eric. So there is a current request before you floor to add the position of food and camp inspector to your list. In looking at the list, so this is a list of special municipal employees that one is approved by the Select Board that positions that are on this list have not all of the state's conflict of interest requirements apply to them. They have some relaxation of those roles because of the nature of the positions. Therefore, it does require the Select Board to, to approve such designations to have them on file with the town clerk, also provide them to the State Ethics Commission. When this current request came up, we looked and it appears the last time the Select Board considered the list, or at least the list that was on file with the town clerk, was from two thousand and thirteen. So I thought it would be certainly timely or maybe past time for the Board to consider some of the various positions that are on here. And to consider adding the food and camp inspector. Some of the positions that were included as of two thousand and thirteen included your fire chief, which at the time, I think, was a part-time fire chief. Now you have a full-time fire chief, so you may want to remove that position. There's a number of, you have a full-time fire lieutenant as well. There's various commissions and committees that, that are no longer in existence that could remove from the list. So just wanted to get your thoughts on updating what we could do if, if you wanted to take action tonight about adding that current position, current request. But we would like to get your input and go back. If you would like, go back to the various commissions and bring back for you an updated list based on your input.
Any comments on the board yet, Paul?
So the policy of the Board has been to only act on these requests when someone comes forward and asks for it. So that's worked well because there's no need to, to, to give people things that they don't, they don't need and are not asking for. But when someone sees that they have a conflict and comes forward and asks for it, then. Then in the past. The board has looked at that position. And made a determination. And I've looked at the request that's currently before the board. It is typically the kind of request that we have routinely granted in the past. And I don't see any reason not to grant it now, so I I am inclined to. Uh, make a motion to approve his his specific request. So those are my two comments.
I I would say it's also appropriate, looking at the list before us to. Tonight, strike anything, any one. Person or committee from this list that either is no longer eligible or no longer in existence. You know, I think if we want to consider adding, you know, new committees that have formed since this list was refreshed, we can do that at a future meeting, but tonight I would at least. Remove from the list anybody that's not eligible or that no longer exists.
Can can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, that happens automatically by law. In other words, you're not. Giving special municipal employee status to any individual, you're giving it to everybody holding a position, so if there's a committee. Everybody on that committee are made specials. If the committee no longer exists. Then by operational law, that special designation applies to no one. The same thing with the fire chief. You cannot be a special if you work more than eight hundred hours a year. If he's working more than eight hundred hours, by definition, he cannot be a special employee, so by operational law, that happens. But I I certainly agree with you. It it makes sense from housekeeping point of view, so people know. Sure, we got to delete committees that haven't, that are no longer in existence. Anybody who's working more than eight hundred hours should automatically come off. I agree with that. But I'm saying there's no crises here because. It works automatically by statute.
So, and I get that. So by law, it doesn't, their their status changes automatically. For our books, does it, does it help at all to vote to clean this up? Because we're always gonna have a full-time fire chief. I don't ever see us not having a full-time fire chief. Um, do we need any vote or any action on our part just to simply clean up administratively? Or could just simply says it doesn't happen, can Jeremy just remove it off whatever list is on?
No, I I I I I think what Stephen said. Was a good idea that we should, and what you're suggesting. Yeah, we should. Delete names of people. It's just sometimes in other communities, when they've done that, then you have people coming in saying. What happened? Why wasn't I notified? Am I screwed? Do I need to resign? Actually, in one community, has somebody resigned? Thinking that. We did something to them and they can no longer hold the job. So there's all kinds of communication issues with suddenly taking. The fire chief and sending him a note saying, oh, by the way, you're no longer a special municipal employee. I I I certainly don't want the fire chief to resign. We're thinking that we fired him because we did this action. So. Given what I've seen in other communities, most communities leave things alone. And the the old cliche, sleeping dogs lie, rather than. Go through all the work that's necessary to. To explain this and what are we doing and why, and how does it affect their employment and blah, 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 that's. That's a fair amount of work and that's gonna fall on Jeremy to do.
And and that's what I was suggesting, Paul, that if you'd like me to do that, I'm I'm happy to do that and go through this list and and speak to the individuals involved and the committees. And then bring back a clean list for your ratification or approval at a later date.
We can do that.
Yeah, I like that idea. It's like we have the clerk, you have the fire chief, and you have have some new committees, who knows?
Collector of Taxes, you know, there there's several positions here that we can clean up and some committees as well, so. Uh, I think, you know, before you tonight is just the one action to consider adding the food and camp inspector to this list.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Uh, Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Okay, very good. Thank you, Jeremy. I catch up a little bit. Okay, next up, is it the Desa one? Yeah, it is. Okay. Establish a special revenue fund under section fifty-three K of chapter forty-four of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for Adessa Special Permit Funds.
Uh, thank you, Eric. Uh, so at the closeout of the two thousand twenty-three supplemental budget, the State House did some updates to municipal finance law. Uh, this being one of the the statute that Eric just mentioned was added. To allow mitigation funds such as those received from Adessa to be placed in a special revenue account. Uh, at the discretion of the select board of the community. Um, so it would be a, you know, a vote of the select board to authorize the. The town accountant to set up such a special account. It's not, you're not obligated to, but it's an option for you. Um, in the past, these funds were not eligible to go into a special revenue account, and they therefore therefore fell to. Um, the general fund as revenue, as general revenue. Um, but with that update, um. Of Mass General Law in December of this past year, you now have that an option to to account for differently. Um, it's somewhat timely now in that those funds from Adessa generally come at the beginning of the fiscal year, so sometime in early July, we generally receive those funds. Uh, the funds are based on the special permit that was issued by the planning board. Um, and in that special permit. Condition number two kind of sets the amount of mitigation payment, and it's based on the cost of eight four-hour police details per month. Um, in that area of the community. It goes on to say such funds shall be used for such police details, or if directed by the Board of Selectmen. For the design and or construction of traffic calming and or traffic safety. And or pedestrian improvements measures on Western Ave. Or such other streets impacted by Adessa traffic as they may deem appropriate. Um, so. In in previous years, finance law prevented these funds from going into a special account. At this past spring town meeting, town meeting did appropriate free cash. To do some improvements on Western Ave. Uh, however, going forward, the the select board, the town has the option to have these funds segregated for that specific use.
Uh, Marion, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, it's not a question, just a comment. I mean, uh, this allows us to finally. Uh, bring the uh, bring our our rules for how we handle the money from Adessa in in line with the special permit. Up until now, it's been in conflict with the special permit because special permit designates the funds for a specific purpose. And having a separate fund really facilitates that, so.
And I'm reading through the link right now.
Add something to that, to what Marion stated. It has been revenue to the general fund, which has helped offset. The operations of the police department, which does do traffic enforcement along Western Ave, so I think we've been in in the spirit of. The use of payments, but not specifically segregating the accounting.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I'll tell you, I'm a little. I'm a little split on this myself a little bit, is I mean, right now. We're strapped revenue into the general fund, but I'm not looking to make this an inappropriate revenue. I wanna, if we spend things appropriately, in some ways, my my have two thoughts. One, if it goes into a revolving fund. Then it's set, and you don't exceed that on traffic calming and so on, like, if it goes in a general fund, you have more flexibility. I don't want to do the wrong thing and spend, like, not spend what we're supposed to spend on these traffic calming and so on like that. But I also like the flexibility. And you do when you need to, and especially like, the police aren't gonna document, oh, I spent so many hours on Western Avenue, this and that, but you gotta pass a straight face test. I'm somewhat inclined not to put this into a special fund, but I'd be interested in more, if there's any more discussion and um. Discussion here.
So who decides how the funds are expended out of this special revenue fund? Like, what's the process for using the money?
I believe it would be the select board who would then authorize it to spend it through.
So it, so this would bypass town meeting effectively. That's that's one thing that gives me pause is, uh, you know, the. Yes, this money is set aside for, you know, a range of specific purposes, but not for like a specific project. And uh, and so it can get spent just by this body. Um, without a town meeting vote, so that that gives me a little bit of pause. That's one of my initial thoughts. Sean Sean has an opinion on that, it looks like.
Well, before I reckon, Paul raised his hand a couple of times. I do want to recognize Paul.
Yes, uh. So I've been on the board when we've tried to spend this money um in the past. And we wanted to do it on things like a sidewalk on Maple Street to connect. Essentially Town Hall with with Western Avenue. And. We had exclusive, essentially exclusive jurisdiction over the funds. That was, we were the only spending authority then, and. We should be the only spending authority now under the special revenue. Fund. Idea. And it's intended to be broader than just police details. Police details are are. One thing that could help mitigate traffic on Western Avenue, but not the only thing. And things like sidewalks, things like like traffic calming devices. And I believe in the past, we have used the money. For. Traffic calming features on Western Avenue. I want to keep the flexibility. This special revenue fund. Does maintain that flexibility. Because it will allow us to spend the money. And we don't have to have it go to a town meeting vote. It's just cleaner all all the way around, so I would. Support this idea as a continuation of the way we used to do things before it had to go to the general fund. Back, I'm trying, the distinction I'm making is, in the old days, we never had to go to the general fund. The select board spent it. And then we got into this business that. Funds being received by the town needed to go to the general fund. This fixes it and brings us back to. The flexibility that we had. Which I think is important to maintain, because if there's something that needs to be done to help the people on Western Avenue, we should be able to do it.
All right, let me recognize. Sorry.
Just one other point. We spend chapter ninety funds. For roadway improvements. That can be used on sidewalks, drainage, all kinds of things without a town meeting vote. And the state has set that up because traffic improvements often need to be done. On times different than the town meeting cycle. And it's important for public safety. So the the default position is that these kind of road improvements. Don't need town meeting votes. So I'm not troubled by the fact that there's no town meeting vote over a twenty thousand dollar item.
All right, uh, let me recognize Sean, please. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I hesitated to comment, but. The. The reference to circumventing town meeting vote, I I needed a comment. The the spirit of that permit was never that these expenditures would go to town meeting. So that. You know, you certainly don't go to town meeting to ask to spend money on police details or enforcement. And and it shouldn't be likewise if we're gonna spend some of the. Revenues that we that we've been hanging on to for decades now. On some traffic company or or other measures, whether it be Western Ave or somewhere else. I think this board is well capable. To. Um, opine on that, and I and I think we should. It's a high threshold to take things to town meeting. In front of the entire town. And and discuss revenues that came in on a permit. That that affects only only part of the town, not just Western Ave, but only, you know, part of the town. So we we did it this year, but it was it was after nearly a decade since the last time we did it. So I I would urge you to to lower that threshold and bring it back to this board and. Keep it segregated. It's also very difficult to track. I know it sounds like it's easy to just track the receipts, but it, you know. Years go by and we don't spend any of the money and and it kind of just disappeared for a while. Thanks.
Okay, um, Doug Kinsley, please go ahead.
It sounds like the conversation here is mostly about the threshold of spending. So I heard a comment from someone that, you know, twenty thousand dollars shouldn't go to the town meeting. I'm not gonna debate that. It seems to me that at a a much higher level. It should go to town meeting, and by way of analogy, there are other funds in town. I think everybody on the board is probably aware of the. Errors and deficiency fund of the school committee. The school committee voted last week to spend a million dollars of that money. On capital projects, which were never discussed at the town meeting. So I think if you're setting up a fund like this. You you absolutely have to have some dollar threshold or or maximum amount of money that you're spending.
Okay. Thank you. Um, there's one question I had here. And if I'm reading this correctly. It talks about that if we have a special project that requires more money, we can go back to Adessa. Someone tell me if I'm reading that correctly. Calming and a traffic safety improvement project has been designed and approved by the selectmen. Additional funds are needed to implement the project. The selectman may direct the applicant, that's Adessa, to make additional payment in the amount sufficient to complete the project. And no case shells payments for police details, maximum monthly. Um, I wonder if that'd be easier to go after additional money if this was essentially a separate fund. Um, one of my issues is that you can't track everything. The police, uh, police doing law enforcement out there and so on like that are approximate. Um, you know, we're starved for revenue going into the general fund in general, but I know we can't make this a profit center out of it. Um, I worry about us spending more than we pull in, and I think having us go into a special will keep us from spending more than what we have going into it. Um, you know, I'm split on the whole town meeting thing, because chapter ninety, of course, that's how it's set up by the state and the select board. I say, I've been good, good. Um, steward to that. Um. But the um, the I, you know, I I obviously was kind of the outlier on how we spent the COVID funds. You know, I voted to stay in line in some cases there, but frankly, um, you know, I thought we should have spent it on items that that town meeting had approved, and the board went a different direction. And spent it on, you know, different projects and stuff like that. Um, so before I recognize anyone else, can someone tell me if I'm reading this correctly, and it's very, it's a big paragraph, paragraph two, if we have a project. And we can't afford to do it, what's in that that fund, we can go at, we can ask Adessa for additional funds. Am I reading that correctly? And maybe I'll recognize Mary Ann while someone reads it and interprets it for me, but that's how I'm reading it. Uh, Mary Ann, you can go ahead.
I think you are reading it correctly, Eric, and I I don't think that that. Uh, that aspect of the special permit has ever been acted upon, uh, because it's rather open-ended and vague. Uh, and uh, I I I think it's a difficult part of this agreement, actually, because. It's uh, it's it's not specific enough. But I would also say that, um, I think having a special fund kind of keeps the issue on the radar screen. Uh, for the planning board as well as the select board. We're seeing a lot of nine-car carriers now on Coolidge Street. Main Street, it's not just Western Ave. And uh, these funds will allow monitoring basically and police details where we need them, just not only on Western Ave. I think I think we need more flexibility than town meeting will provide. And more time flexibility than town meeting would provide, so I'm in favor of the change.
Yeah, Paul?
So back in the day when I was on the planning board, the 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 idea. That someone had was to rebuild. That portion of Western Avenue in a way that trucks could not turn right on exiting. And that that was more expensive than. A, the town wanted to do, and B, uh, that Adessa wanted to do. And the compromise was this language, and in the meantime, we put up, we had them put up some Jersey barriers. So that. It would start with like a shoot directing traffic to the left and not to the right. That mean, right meaning going south on Western Avenue into Sherburne. The idea was to. To force those those carriers because of their size and bulk and everything else to go north. That's what I I that was the genesis of the language. It was an unsolved. It was an unsolved issue, so we kicked the can down the road.
And those Jersey berries, they are there. They are still there to this. I mean, I will say that, you know, I observe carries still going to Sherman. It does happen. Enforcement is and talk about that some other thing, but yeah, most don't. And I think it's been reasonably reasonably successful. Marion.
Yeah, I I agree, Eric. It has been reasonably successful, especially on Western Ave. Where the big problem now is dump trucks and trash trucks. But as far as the directing applicants as the as this special permit. Directing, I should say, drivers as the special permit describes, it's been very hard for a Dessa to control. Incoming drivers because they're using GPS. And even after having been there once, they're still using GPS and they don't always keep someone at the gate. This is a very, very hard thing to be on top of all the time because it's a daily problem. So, I mean, just in in general, I think we need some flexibility.
And I'll tell you, I'll be honest here. I'm kind of borderline even on the planning board. I sometimes accuse myself, and I wouldn't accuse myself on the complete permits. I just want to stick it to the fund. But I'll say this is something which is probably impossible to enforce. The great, the special permit actually says shallow to business with. It says those hand maps out to the drivers and so on like that, but there's no truck exclusion on Western Ave, and it is a public road and frankly, I think. You know, Sherman's lucky to get what they have with us, so. So all that being said. Does anyone have any last minute thoughts on whether this should be, and this we call special fund, it's a revolving fund. Is that right, Jeremy? Basically, it comes in and you need it and it accrues over fiscal years and stuff like that.
It's similar. It's not technically a revolving fund in that there's no limit set at town meeting. It's based on a revenue that you receive for for this purpose.
So can I make a motion to?
My next question is if there's if there's a limit or not, if we can go, we can suddenly accrue as high as you want and spend on something big. We include on like, you know, put like permanent islands in Western Ave or something like that. That actually was my next question there.
That's correct.
Okay.
So could I make a motion to?
Can I ask one more question? You can make motion. I know I can discuss. You've told me that before. You go ahead, make the motion how you want to do it, and I'm I'm going to ask another question before I ask for a second.
I can hold off. It's just some 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 boards like to have a motion on the floor. Like a town meeting, first you have to have a motion before you discuss the article. So I'm used to both, whatever you want.
My last one is, and we're pretty flexible, it's going to be it's going to be outside of Western Ave. Imagine passes a straight face test that like it might be impacted by truck truck traffic. That's reasonably true as well.
Yeah, that's in the wording of the special permit. Measures on Western Ave or such other streets impacted by a Dessa traffic as may be deemed appropriate.
And I'm fine, and I'm just looking for the language, and we must spend the money on something along those lines. There's no flexibility. And only asking that because again, it's input into the general, which we are kind of sparse on.
I can read the the requirements again. So right from condition number two of the special permit, it says such funds. Shall be used for such police details or if directed by the Board of Selectmen. For the design and or construction of traffic calming and or traffic safety. And or pedestrian improvement measures on Western Ave or such other streets impacted by a Dessa traffic as they may deem appropriate.
And if we did details, the details will be paid by the fund and so on. That'd be a little administrative headache versus doing the general fund or whatever else. And it does say shall in there, so I'm really fine either way, to be honest. I don't have a strong feeling on this. Okay, Paul, I'll recognize you for a motion.
Move to establish a special revenue fund. Under chapter fifty three K of chapter forty four of the general laws of the Commonwealth for receipt. And expenditure of funds received from a Dessa. As a condition of a special permit granted by the planning board.
I second.
Before I collect the vote, I'm just going to informally ask Stephen, I don't know if you have any before I collect your vote, any other thoughts on it? Because you are, you kind of spoke on it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I I I still I still have the same reservation about. The the fact that 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 it is a a fund where. Only the select board has the authority to spend it, you know, I mean, on the one hand. I I recognize that it's not like every twenty thousand dollar project you want to have to go to town meeting to do, right? But effectively, what's been happening is that some amount of roadwork it happens over there, some amount of police detail happens over there. And that gets reflected in the DPW and the. Police Department budgets, right? And those budgets. Go through town meeting, right? They go through advisory, they go through us, and it goes through the the standard review. And some amount of money is set aside for police details, right? And we know that the the police are going to spend spend the money on the police details, and you can just kind of say, well. If there is a police detail that happened over on Western Avenue, then, you know, that that was paid for by a Dessa, you know. On the other hand, I I recognize that the spirit of the establishment of this whole thing was that. A Dessa would be paying money to the town for a particular purpose and that we may not have been specifically. Functioning in keeping with that spirit. And and I do think that if we can sort of, you know, we we happen to currently be in a situation where we have this money. And it is, it has no strings attached because it just goes into the general fund and and nobody can possibly track what's actually happening with it. And, you know, as a the the advisory committee member in me kind of likes that because it's like that's. That's simply money into the large pot and it's helping. I mean, it's it's a little bit over a penny off of the tax rate, basically. So. You know, that part of it, I would prefer to keep how it is, but I recognize that it isn't really in keeping with the spirit of the the whole purpose of why this was spent. And why a Dessa gives us money. So I think that reestablishing this mechanism that ideally will actually accomplish. What it was meant to do, I think is reasonable. So so I do think that I think I am going to vote in favor of it.
Now, I will tell you more to support your previous point. So an FY twenty five is projected at twenty eight, eight thousand, twenty eight thousand, eight hundred, almost thirty thousand, and you can bank it. So you bank it for five years and look at a hundred fifty thousand dollar capital creation, which would very much be a town meeting, just so you know, this to become aware. So it's not just twenty thousand dollars here and there. It's not just police deals, that this literally could be. A hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, depends how many years you want to bank it and with the price going up. Could be a very easily six figure capital appropriation approved by a different board you see sitting in front of you. It'll be Paul and four other people.
Yeah, no, I mean, honestly, that 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 does worry me. That worries me that. That in, you know, every five years, there could be a a six figurer essentially, you know, capital roadworks project that. Is just happening without without any town meeting, capital budget or advisory input, you know.
On the other hand, sorry, I should put up my hand.
I see.
I've I've been talking without putting up my hand, so Eric Eric can, he can chastise me for that if he wants, but.
Steve, I thought you had talked yourself into it then, and then I guess not. On the other hand, the other side of that is that right now. Nobody's really keeping track of where this money's going, which is really not in the spirit of the special permit. So with my old planning board hat pulled out. I I prefer to have it in a designated fund that does have some oversight. And certainly is not going to accumulate indefinitely because we have plenty of potential roadwork. Sidewalk, safety, projects that are related to trucks in some way on on town roads. So I don't know, I think I I like to know where this money's going, and I think it's better to have a special fund to be able to track it.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah, Paul.
The history of the town has been that when we are doing a substantial project. We actually do bring it to town meeting, even for funding components that aren't necessarily town meeting. Appropriations, like when we were doing this roundabout. The last article. Really wasn't necessary from the point of view of the funding because we were using state grants, we were using chapter ninety funds. All those components did need a town meeting vote. But the board felt the project of that size and 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 that impact on the community. ought to go back to town meeting for another vote. And I'm sure Sean will say, wait a second, there already was a town meeting vote. For this is the second town meeting vote, but the fact is, we felt responsibly. We should present the big project to to the town to to. Make sure that everybody was on board with it. And with that precedent. I would sit my response to to Eric would be, we're we're likely to do that in the future. And so if there really was, if we really did bank this money and we had the accumulated money, it was going to be part of a big project. I'm pretty comfortable thinking that it would be presented to town meeting anyway.
Before I recognize Sean, I just want to say something. The one thing I always believe in, though, we have to counter against a different board. I don't know. This is a great board. And I love this board. Well, you know, like you guys a lot. And I just. I just, I worry about it. I mean, I've lived in this town long enough, and my family's in this town, I've seen a lot of boards come and go and this and that. And I just like to have the, I understand why this, you know, checks and balances are set up. Yeah, and just like I said, so I just, I I still have to worry about this board I have confidence in, but this is one of those things that's in perpetuity. Uh, yeah, Sean. And you're muted.
Yeah, I can't comment on future boards of selectmen, but you, I mean, you have to have faith in yourself. In that if if you don't feel like you're vetted a project well enough, first of all. You guys, single handedly vote on. No less than two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of roadwork a year, more like half a million. Because the town meeting just does the appropriation. You guys vote on them on the actual projects every year. And if you didn't feel comfortable with it, you could kick it back to the capital budget committee just to review it. But you have to have faith in in something because town meeting can't review every single project that may come down the pipe.
That's true. All right. I think I've heard enough. I know what direction I want to go. So Paul put a motion on there. Mary Ann, you seconded it, didn't you?
I did.
Create this fund or whatever. Okay. I usually go in a certain order of the hierarchy, but I'm going to change the order a little bit here just to make suspense. There you go, clerk, vice chair clerk, whatever.
Does that mean I'm on the top or the bottom? Anyway, I'm. I'm for it, yes.
Okay, Paul.
I also, yes.
All right, Stephen.
I.
All right, I am I as well. I am. I was on defense as well. It's pretty obvious. I think Jeff and I do the same thing. So it will go to like vice chair clerk and then whoever like shows up first or whatever. I put you guys in order, you know, I mean, so it's usually Mary Ann or Paul or whoever's on. All right, oh, that was a good, that was a good healthy discussion. Let me find my agenda. Okay, agenda item number number seven. Consider petition to the general court for special legislation to allow the town to convert one license for the sale of beer and wine and malt beverages. Not to be drunk on premises to a license for the sale of all alcohol beverages not to be drunk on premises. From Art Specialties, eleven South Main Street. Is Jeannie speaking that? Who's speaking for this?
I can help Eric. So town meeting authorized the select board to file this special legislation. So in the spirit of the the requests, I worked with town council to draft the special legislation that's in your packet. There's also a draft letter, a transmittal letter to Representative Arena De Rosa. And the next step would be for the select board to endorse the draft special legislation and authorize this. The chair to sign the transmittal to to get this off to the State House.
So you're ready? A quick little, just a quick little administrative question. Said authorize the chair. Would Jeff sign it? Because he's not here, would I have to sign it? Just so I know if I get to show up. No, we can ask.
There's no urgency behind this because the legislature is going to be adjourning on July thirty first and. This getting there. This week or next week isn't going to make much difference. This is going to be a next year's bill. So Jeff can sign it whenever he comes back.
All right.
I move the, we approve the language and and authorize. The chair or in his absence, the vice chair to sign the letter and present it to the general court.
Right, any discussion or seconds?
I have a question. This is a license that could be transferred to another business in the future, right? This is licensed that the town holds basically to allow a certain number. Yeah, okay, great. Yeah.
It's similar to a regular, like any like a license, like when a business is sold, it's sold with the license. So someone comes in and buys arts. They buy the license with it, yeah. Okay, any further discussion or seconds? We don't have a second yet. We have a second or further discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, using the traditional order, all in favor, Stephen?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Yep. Well, that one, we've definitely passed a meeting as well, minimal discussion, so we're very proud to support Sherman businesses. All right, coming down to it, we have the consent agenda. Happy for you. All right.
Second.
And second, very good. All in favor, Stephen?
I.
Marion?
I.
And Paul?
I.
I am I as well, thank you. Any select board reports?
I've got one. Okay, so last night we wrapped up the negotiations with the unit B of the. Teachers Union, the education assistance. So we came to an agreement last night and hopefully that will get. Ratified by the EA unit. I think they were aiming for by the end of May, May twenty ninth, I think. And then the next. Regional School Committee meeting is, it was either June eleven or June thirteen. One of those is us, one of those is them. I don't remember, but. Hopefully, they were going to approve it in that June meeting, so.
Did the negotiations go okay for the most part or?
Yeah, I mean, it, I think it only took. Four meetings, of which the first one was basically just an introductory one, so three, only three meetings with me. We we went pretty late last night because we kind of sensed that we were close to finishing it up, so. You know, we ended at like nine thirty or something like that.
Very good. Well, and thank you for being involved with that. Oh, I understand you're doing the graduation, correct?
Uh, yeah, supposedly.
Good luck.
I forgot about that, but thanks.
All right, good luck. Any other select board reports? Okay, moving on that, town administrator reports. We have a good menu of them here.
Thank you, Eric. Going forward, I'm going to try to have sort of a listing of of. A known town administrator reports on your agenda, just to give you a little preview of what what I may be talking about. The the first is an update on regional school capital, uh, school. Regional School Committee capital projects. Late last week, this school administration's, the superintendent's office called and informed us. At that, at the. Regional School Committee's meeting of May seventh, that they voted to reallocate some funds towards. Various capital projects. And so I wanted to, you know, ensure that the the board was aware of that. They, the school committee moved to transfer six hundred and fifty five thousand. Dollars in excess deficiency funds to the regionals capital fund to cover the cast. The costs for approved capital projects as presented in the the presentation materials to the regional school committee. And they also voted to reallocate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of approved capital funding from the high school boiler project. To the high school rooftop unit project. So knowing that this is related to the regional schools and the agreement between the communities. Just wanted to ensure that the the select board was aware of of the regional school committee's vote.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen, and I have a question as well.
Yeah, the three hundred and fifty thousand that was for the boiler project, was that a? Was that a capital item that we? was that a capital item that um we approved um for borrowing for debt service?
So the, that project had been on the the regional regions capital program. Um, however, previously it was removed from the plan presented to town meeting because the region voted to use excess and deficiency funds to fund it. So that three hundred and fifty thousand that was reallocated, it's our understanding that the funding source was E and D funds.
So all of it was is E and D essentially, okay?
That's our understanding.
Alright, thanks.
Now, did we allocate capital funds? The um, a school committee can do that without authorization at town meetings. I thought that, you know, if it comes from similar funds or whatever, I'm used to like some um enterprise funds that you actually have to um still do town meetings approval to to reauthorize, but they, the school committee can do that on their own?
I think when the region uses E and D, they don't need um, they don't need town uh approval because the E and D money is their money, it's not our money. If they need us to borrow money in order, well, if they need either the town to put up its free cash or to borrow um uh for the the project, then it needs town meeting. But if they're using E and D, that's essentially like the town deciding to use free cash for a capital item. Um, so, you know, it's it's not a, it's not a borrowing issue.
Well, it looks like my question initiated some more questions.
We should also be careful that this doesn't turn into a big discussion because even though it's on the agenda, I don't think it's on the agenda as a topic of discussion for the select board.
No, that that is true. It's it's a town administration report, and there's some limits on the discussion we have. We certainly can't vote on anything, I do know that. So I'm gonna ask people to make short comments, as long as it stays informative in the spirit of a town administration report. So if you have questions for us, we probably will not answer them, but just stay in the spirit that this is a a report. So I'll start with Doug.
Uh, apparently the school committee mentioned that the town has to approve this use of the E and D funds. Is that true or not?
Uh, hi- historically, I don't believe, I mean, Paul, you might know the real answer, but historically, when the, when the region has used E and D to fund uh projects, they have not come to the town for approval for those.
Alright.
There was a mention of forty-five days to approve it. That's not a thing. Not, that's, why would the person say that?
It's the other way around.
What does that mean?
That it it's effective unless within forty-five days, we call a special town meeting and town meeting votes now.
Okay. If this is important enough, we can't. Actually have a discussion. I am cautious on the amount of discussion we have and the amount we answer here. Um, you know, offline, if you wanna go to, we can make agenda item, you can maybe, um, you know, ask town administrator, and we can actually look into it a bit more. I don't wanna have too much back and forth here in the spirit of it being a report. So we do know in the report that they allocate these funds. Let me ask, um, does anyone know, was this at a school, is this school committee meeting recorded somewhere where people can review it and look at some of the stuff?
Yes, it is. It's, it was a recorded, it was a regular scheduled regional school committee meeting. I believe their their agenda packet and supporting information is also on the school com- the school regions website. But I think it is a, it's on a, you know, the YouTube stream if folks would like to watch it.
Let me direct people to that, and then if you want, maybe we can discuss it at the next meeting, which ironically I can't attend. And I thought if we can actually have a more hardcore tonight, if we think that there's gonna be quite a bit more on this. Doug, did you have something, maybe one more quick, again, in the spirit of it being reported?
Just, yeah, yeah, just, just really a quick question for the select board is, is is it your view that the school committee should be able to unilaterally spend a million plus dollars without the you or the any, the advisory committee or the town meeting having any say over it? Is that, is that, is that the way this town is working right now?
Well, I I I don't think we should apply that. Let's look at the background material. We can make a real agenda item and have a dialogue, a philosophical opening, a question like that where we don't even have a packet in our material with the background material and probably vote. Uh, I'm gonna ask the board not to opine on that. It's a dialogue that again is against the spirit of a select board report or whatever this is, a town administrator report and and that.
Can we put it on the next meeting for discussion?
Yeah, um, approach Jeremy and Jeff. So Jeff, Jeff is the chair of the next, the next meeting. And we'll put the the background material, we'll put it in there, and we can actually look at it and give um a thoughtful dialogue about it.
Great, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Uh, Sean, you have something?
Yeah, I hung on because that's exactly what I was gonna ask. I I'm certain that if I was a million dollars over budget on a couple of projects, not just this committee, advisory, capital budget, and every committee in O one seven seven O would have my tail. And I think it's incumbent on this board at least to throw an agenda item out there and ask that the superintendent and the business manager show up and explain how they did that, because this came up almost in every capital budget and advisory meeting that I was at this year and last year. They compared everything we were doing as a town with what the region did, so it was predictable that this was gonna happen, and I I urged this board to at least ask why this came up the week after a town meeting.
I will encourage Jeff to put this on the next, um, it's a shame I can't make that meeting, but I'll encourage Jeff to put this on the next agenda, especially if there is some kind of time limit there, whatever. Uh, Nora?
I concur with Sean. Thank you. Please put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I'm betting it's gonna be on the agenda. And I'll probably, I'll start, um, like I said, Gavin, whatever background material, and maybe put an email out, Jeremy, just to the group to say like, which meeting it is and maybe a link to it or something, and we can uh, even if you don't mind even like when it's on, we can go look at and catch a discussion. I think it sounds like something worthwhile.
Yeah, one more comment, not a deliberation. Uh, uh, do you think the uh finance director of the regional schools and maybe a member of the school committee should be in on that discussion? I think it would be good to have them there for back purposes.
Uh, I think it's certainly worth inviting them. See if they go. I think it's certainly worth inviting. Um, alright, keep on going, Jeremy. You're uh, that was a pretty good for your first of five bullets on the select board.
I'll try to move along quicker. Um.
That's not your fault.
Next update, uh, we had a great meeting with this, some folks from the city of Framingham, their city planner, uh Herb Nolan of the Solomon Foundation, uh Robert Wolf of of the of our community uh and a few other folks. Um, and the, it was to announce that the Solomon Foundation is gonna be uh contracting a feasibility study for the, for a rail with trail connection from Whitney Street north into Framingham. That's about a two-mile stretch that this feasibility uh study would cover. Um, it would prepare a base plan, do some site analysis, create alternative alignments. And that draft, um, they hope to have a consultant begin in June and have a draft of that feasibility study uh available for the public to to opine on um later um this summer, uh, it's sometime in August. A study like this would help uh advocacy for uh grants and state funding to complete that rail trail connection. So wanted to relay that news. Uh, we've heard from the local delegation, uh, the Senator Roush's office, uh Representative Arena De Rosa's office. They've been able to put in um the draft FY twenty-five budget, some amendments uh to benefit Sherburne. Our Senator Roush's office has included fifty thousand dollars for water quality and infrastructure improvements in Sherburne. And Representative Arena De Rosa's office has included twenty-five thousand dollars for safety and lighting improvements to Woodhaven Elder Housing. So hopefully those stick within the the state budget uh as it moves forward. Uh, and now some updates on Washington and Maple Street, and I invite Sean to to chime in after I give a quick summary on any more details. Um, the contractor has mobilized and uh has started uh stockpiling materials uh near the intersection. They've ex- they've started excavation for subsurface drainage. Um, so there's a fair amount of work happening in the lawn in front of the library, in front of town hall, near the intersection. That's gonna be where a subsurface stormwater drainage system is gonna be installed. That will help control runoff and and improve stormwater quality. Uh, that's outside of the roadway, so currently there's no direct impacts to traffic. However, starting June seventeenth, uh, the intersection will be closed and a detour put in place. Uh, and then uh the work on the intersection will begin in earnest if it, for the construction of the roundabout. Uh, and hopefully completed and open to traffic, reopen to traffic in mid-August. It's certainly gonna be done well before uh, school opening. Uh, there's a news alert that's been distributed to folks. There's information on the town's website. The director butters to the projects. Uh, Sean did deliver uh letters directly to them, so they've gotten uh direct communication. And also wanted to know, um, some of the features of the projects. Um, we've asked the contractor to put together a mock sample of what they will look like specifically. Is around the roundabout, there's slope granite curbing that contains the landscaped area, but just outside of that is an area where trucks can travel, but vehicles are not supposed to travel. That would be of a different color and texture. Uh, and that's currently proposed to be a stamped colored concrete with various texture. The um we've, we're asking them to put together out, you know, ahead of doing that work, a sample mock-up so that we could all see what it would look like before it's fully sold. So. You're aware of when that's completed, and we'll invite you all out to take a look uh to make sure that we're all comfortable with what that may look like. Sean, anything more to add?
Yeah, before Eric chimes in on the stamped concrete, I was gonna better define that as the option of red brick stamped or uh a mock cobble look. So obviously gray, the the gray can be a two-tone, it is a two-tone. Uh, the red is basically just one monotone red with a, with a stamp pattern.
But there's many creations in that color, so I think, you know, regardless of what is chosen, um, you know, it'll be good to see an actual, you know, an actual installation, so you'll be, you're comfortable with what it's gonna look like going forward.
And if you want, just go to either Framingham or Wellesley and look at the different tones of red between them. Um, Nora, did you have something on that?
I did. Um, I'm putting my Sherburne Garden Club hat on in the island that's currently there on Sanger Street. Sean, uh, Margot had a great idea, and she's on this call. Uh, I, we need help transplanting those plants that are perennials and the daffodils that we've done over the years and maintained, especially in me, um, to put them somewhere else on town property. Uh, Margot, if you're listening, I think that's you there, uh, maybe towards the police station or that extra property. Uh, maybe I can collaborate with you, but is there any way we can get some help on transplanting that?
I know some people.
Okay, great. Can help supervise.
We'll just yank everything out and plop it somewhere else. Uh, if there, if there isn't a final destination, we'll find a donor location for the for the plants over there.
Yeah, cause they're all perennials and then the daffodils, of course. So um, maybe we can collaborate on that. Thank you.
Yes.
And I'll just say, as I see them digging up for the roundabout, I never thought about this before, but after the election, it occurred to me that Jackie might have to you know, redefine the radius so people know where they stand, and if they can stand on the roundabout or not, or on the sidewalk around it, if it's gonna be all sudden like much more limited where people can stand with their signs. It's gonna push people toward town hall.
It, it's close to it. Well, they, they'll be able to ring one side of it, cause remember the sidewalks and crosswalks. So people will be forced to drive around the circle and look at the people.
He can't shelter eye. I wave at everyone.
If I could, there's, we have been digging up some red brick in the fill. And I, I bet it probably matches some red brick that ended up at your house.
Guarantee it does. Yeah.
Historic building got built, torn down.
Yeah, and my dad paid something like three cents a brick for those things back in like nineteen sixty-something, whatever it was, so let me know if he's selling that stuff. Oh, yeah, Jackie, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that Master and Law says that you had, that the people can't pay, can't campaign one hundred and fifty feet within town hall, so if we have to move them over to the left as you're looking at the road, that's fine. Um, but uh, so I can't, you know, I just had a senior moment, I can't remember what else I was gonna say.
Well, I, and I can attest that that is measured um specifically. Uh, Jackie and Tony were out prior to this past election with, with a measuring tape, so.
But every, it's been the same. They always know where it is, you know, I mean, it's always um been pretty consistent to speak.
You know, the other thing I actually I was gonna say is that the state primary is September third, so I'm really hoping that Sean is able to meet his August twenty-fifth deadline, or it will not be fun getting voters to to town hall. That's it.
Alright, let's move on.
Yeah, last update for the board, uh, just a staffing update. We welcomed a new board of health administrator this Monday. Jessica Edwards has joined us. Uh, she's a welcome addition. Um, and she had her first board of health meeting last night, and she's, she's still with us this morning, so that's great. Um, we do have, and uh and regarding the conservation agent, we have an offer letter out to our, to a candidate, and cross your fingers, we'll hear uh back tomorrow whether she accepts.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Any last uh, last notes before we sign off here? Any motions to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Alright, in a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
I.
Uh, Marion?
I.
And Paul?
I, but I have one little suggestion for you before you close the meeting.
Go ahead.
That is, most of my other boards that I attend announce when their next meeting is going to be. So that those who are watching know when our next meeting is going to be. So it might make sense for us to do that, as we close the meeting to say come join us at our next meeting of such and such date.
So it's interesting, and there's one circumstance I'm hesitant to do that, cause then the next meeting that we know of is at the thirtieth, on May thirtieth, but there's some discussion on doing a standalone one agenda item meeting to meet with, um, and I don't wanna have a whole lot of questions on this, very obviously, there's nothing on the agenda to meet with Bob Mertenson to go over some changes he's proposing in his developments. And we thought that was important, so that might happen. I'm not sure what's gonna happen. It probably happened after the thirtieth. But I'm so unsure, I don't want people to to tune out and think the next one's only guaranteed the thirtieth. Does that make sense?
Your next regularly scheduled meeting is May thirtieth.
Absolutely. Um, so yeah, the next regular schedule, please keep your eye on the webpage and agendas. I'm sure it'll go out. Um, I'm sure it'll be one of the most well-attended meetings ever, when we do, uh, if we do something like that, um, where, you know, Bob is, I think met with me and a couple others to talk about this holistic change. He's looking to do it, um, you know, all of his, um, all those developments and the and that'll, worthy of, again, worthy of a standalone. Um, so yeah, next regular schedule will be on May thirtieth. Okay, so we, I believe we have a motion and a second, and we have, and Paul, how do you vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, despite that, it's before eight o'clock, so I'm gonna say nay, uh, but I'm outvoted, so we are. Absolutely.
Thanks.